Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, September 8th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District. Can I have a motion to convene the meeting?
Louis, Scott?
All in favor? Next is... There's so much feed. Next is to a motion to convene executive session. Scott, second. Joel, all in favor? Okay. So, we're going to go to executive session and we will be back at approximately 7:30. Okay. Welcome back, everybody. Sorry for the delay. We had some very important business to discuss. I really was trying to keep it on track, but we just had to continue the conversations that we were having. I'm so sorry. Okay. So, the first order of business is such allegiance. Okay. All right. So, the first order of business is board comments. Why don't we start it? Do you want to go first, Louis? Sorry.
Sure. So, welcome back to school, which has... Welcome back to school, which has certainly been a smooth and successful one at that. It's been a very busy summer and we're very excited about our new administrative team and excited about our team here. We've really been working very well together and making great progress, as much that has been done over the past short couple of months. Our new team here is also focused on being present and it was great to see the other trustees and our administration enjoying the game on Friday night up in Chester. I'm also very excited and thank you to Alexandra Campana, my wife. She's done a wonderful job of getting SEPTA off the ground and thank you to the PTA for their support. Thank you.
Everybody, I don't have too much to say. Just welcome back. I hope everybody had a great summer. We're excited for the new school year and, like Louis said, very excited about our new administrative team and the work that was done over the summer. I think we're ready for a great year and I'm excited about it. That's it.
Yes, welcome back, everybody. It's been a busy summer and it's a great team that I'm with. I have to say, we've accomplished quite a bit and I'm excited for the 25, 26 school year because I think it's going to be promising. And, you know, just to make note, I was last week at the volleyball game for the Varsity JV. You know, it's really exciting, a very good team. It was good to see a lot of admin there, a lot of my old colleagues, and that's very exciting. And also, you know, made the trip up to Chester, which also, a lot of our admin and secondary administrative staff was there as well. Great support. I just broke something. And also, I will be appointing a lot of teachers this evening and staff for the extracurricular and I'd like to thank all of them for stepping up and, you know, taking this role. It's very important that our students have these clubs and that, you know, our staff is stepping up and... Thank you.
So, I won't talk about summer break because it's kind of passed us now. It's two weeks, but I want to just thank the teachers for the dedication to the district, our administrative team at Cottle, the middle school high school, for your hard work over the summer. It was a seamless start to the school year. Thank you, Mr. Roberts, superintendent as well, and Faith, of course. Thank you to Chris Fiori for joining our wonderful district. Special Ed Directors is at DEWS. We're excited to have both of you. I want to thank the PTA for hosting our welcome back breakfast for our wonderful staff last week and, of course, all you do. Thank you very much. Just a couple of updates on the facilities front. Our summer construction has been wrapped up, I think, Faith. I'll defer to you, but we can talk about that. Our new PA system, I hope the students are enjoying that, that everyone can hear their teachers and administrators loud and clear now. We've done some additional security cameras over the summer, as everyone knows, and much needed infrastructure work that unfortunately you cannot see because it's below ground. But anyway, it was much needed. We had a board summer retreat this month, as we always do every year, and that's happened before Labor Day. It's kind of where the board comes together and we set goals on how to move the district forward. The board is very focused on the needs of all students here at Tuckahoe, so I just wanted to remind the community that we're always thinking about how to take Tuckahoe to the next level. This can be in college readiness, reading programs, internships, and just overall academics, but this board is very focused and the retreat was probably, it's my third year, this is probably the best one we had. So, I'm excited for the year to come and I look forward to working with this current board and, of course, Superintendent Roberts. So, thank you.
So, in my opening remarks, I would like to begin by thanking the teachers, the staff, and the administrators for their work, especially this past spring. I know it was a time of great transition for the district, especially the middle school and the high school, and I want to just emphasize our gratitude for the continued dedication, stability, and commitment to the students that you all gave. And, you know, you really still provided our students with the guidance, care, and education that they deserved and we are... I am very grateful for all of your support during that team... during that time, sorry. I also want to acknowledge that this year truly feels like a new beginning for Tuckahoe. We have a lot of new faces at the board. We have a new superintendent and new administrators in our key leadership positions. I'm very proud of this leadership team and the energy, vision, and commitment that they came in with. I am very happy so far with Mr. Roberts' smooth transition into his role. I want to just talk about how he's come in with a thoughtful, student-centered approach and it's really appreciated and so far, I'm really, really optimistic with Mr. Roberts and what his team of leaders will do for our district. And I just want to really ask everyone that you join the board in support for Mr. Roberts and his administrative team because their success will be our collective success as a district. Supporting the superintendent and our new administration will be a really important step towards continuing the forward momentum of this district. Okay. So, next, and Scott alluded to it a little bit, is that we set up our board goals for the year when we did our retreat and I just want to go over those so that everybody understands what the mission of the board is for the year and what we are trying to accomplish this year. So, our first step will be forming the strategic plan with our superintendent and our community stakeholders. Developing a clear roadmap for the district and its future is important to us. We're going to align it with students' success and community values. Our next goal is communication and stakeholder engagement. We are going to increase board visibility. We are going to provide recaps of board meetings, hopefully by email, to improve transparency. And we are going to make a point to reach out to personally thank our staff more often. We are also going to, hopefully, do some community meetings and forums, which we used to do in the past, with the superintendent and a couple of board members to try to create more open dialogue. Our third goal is policy review and revision. We have... We're going to identify our outdated policies that need revision and we're going to analyze and try to create some new policies that we feel might be needed. And we're going to ensure that all of our policies reflect current law, best practices, and the school district needs. And last, but certainly not least, probably the most important thing that we will do this year, is settle the contract negotiations with all three of our units. We would like to finalize the contracts in a fair, transparent, and sustainable way. We do feel that our units, our staff, and teachers here are the key to our district and settling these contracts is really the number one board priority for the board. And that is... That's about it for our goals. In closing, I just want to reaffirm our commitment to the staff and thank them again for the help during the transition. I know that this year is, you know, going to have some bumps in it because all change does bring bumps. However, it's... I'm really, really excited with all the potential that we have to go in. We are in a really good spot with a really good superintendent and really good new leaders and I just am so hopeful for the direction that we are headed in for our little district. And that's it. Comments from the superintendent?
All right. Thank you very much. President Halloran. So, I want to welcome everyone back. Hopefully, all of our students' families had a wonderful Labor Day weekend. I know I got a chance to spend time with some family and then we hit the ground running here at Tuckahoe. So, they may have been the longest, busiest four days work week in a while, but it was great. We started with our two days of superintendent's conference days, welcoming all our staff back. It was great to see everybody. And in terms of the kind comments that the board has shared with me, it really is about the staff here. Everyone is just so embracing of our students, of myself, our leadership team, so it truly is a wonderful place to be and a great place for a leader to work with our team and to forge ahead with our vision. So, I want to thank all the staff for that warm welcome that I've received and the support from the board as well. It's been tremendous in starting my superintendency here at Tuckahoe in the last two months and I really look forward to getting to know more parents and students moving forward. So, kudos to you all. A little bit about this week, kind of reflecting on some of the great accomplishments that the team moved forward with. So, two days of wonderful professional development in our superintendent's conference days for our teacher and welcomed all of our staff. Time back in classrooms, targeted professional development for our teachers, opportunity to engage in some good conversations about moving forward this year. As President Halloran said, we were focusing on the strategic plan. We'll be sending out communications to our stakeholders, getting more community input and moving forward with various committees, but also our strategic steering team to work on that process. A little bit about this past week, I really want to emphasize with the staff, empowering students and all educators, providing high-quality professional development and learning, creating leaders out of all of our staff, making sure that everyone steps above and beyond their roles and really doing everything they can to go above and beyond for students was part of the keynote that I provided to staff. Focusing on and promoting a student-centered, equitable, and transparent culture is a high priority when students... Where student success and well-being drive all major decisions. And continue to bring new learning opportunities here at Tuckahoe and programs that'll support our student needs to make sure that we're offering world-class educational experiences for all students will be a part of our main focus. It was my pleasure to introduce the new administrators at the opening convocation. Great to have Mr. Fiori here, our new principal at the middle school high school, very experienced, hitting the ground running and every place I turn around, he's standing there. So, it's great to have him. I don't know if he's blocking the sun or he's in... leading his way, but he is everywhere and really connecting with staff and families. It's great to see. And also, our new director of special education is at DEWS, hit the ground running, working with families. We've been meeting with, you know, different stakeholder groups, talking about their journey in special education, meeting with teachers, really see where are our strengths and what are some areas that we can grow in. And I'm really excited about her leadership in that role. The opening day, we had the pleasure of recommend... or excuse me, introducing our several distinguished honorees from our school district that have achieved 10, 15, and 25 years of dedicated service to Tuckahoe. So, I want to give them a quick shout out on their achievements. They were recognized on the opening ceremony and presented a plaque by the district, but congratulations to Juan Alvarado, Lauren Calasaco, Sloan Dill, Jill Quatero, Stephanie E. Terzelli. Those were 10 years. 15-year, we had Frances Sadorali, Eric Sullivan, and for 25 years, we actually had a little shout out of all the things that happened 25 years ago that I think the staff enjoyed from not quite Walkmans, but it was the introduction of iPads and some other trendy gear. But Jennifer Capoci, Deborah DiFrancesco, Colleen Joyce, and Michael Oliveri were congratulations for 25 years of service here at Tuckahoe and they deserved all the praise and accolades from our entire staff. Thank you to our community partners who were there in full force, speaking to all of our staff on the opening day. We had a PTA, SEPTA, and our athletic council representatives there and thank you for all of the support for the welcome breakfast and then the new administrator evening partnered with our PTA, once again, stepping forward and providing great support and bringing in a tremendous amount of community members. We probably had about 200-plus parents, guardians here to meet myself and our new members of the administrative team. It was posed to me that we'll have a couple in a slight gathering and everyone came out in full force, so it was great to see this entire library full, standing room only, and the great questions that the parents asked about education. We got a chance to get to know all of myself and the new administrators and really forge a journey together. So, that was a great experience for me and to see when parents are asked to come out of Tuckahoe, they show up in full force and I really think that is the calling card of this district, is the community that it brings forward. So, very appreciative of that. Moving forward a little bit of a highlight last week, the main highlight was our students coming back. So, students coming back, pre-K through 12, on Thursday, we had a great, smooth opening. Students coming into classrooms, they were smiling, everyone was very excited to be back. Everyone of our staff embraced our students and you could see the smiles on everyone's faces. So, that's what school's all about and I'm really excited that we got to experience that. And tremendous kudos to so many of our high school students and many of our little ones. They felt so confident coming up to me, introducing themselves. "Hi, Mr. Roberts," said their name, great eye contact, just looked me in the eyes and had the confidence to come up and introduce themselves and to welcome. And many students in other schools don't do that and they do that at Tuckahoe here with pride. So, great job to all of our teachers and parents and families for raising those accomplished youngsters that are just confident. And I think that's what I saw with a lot of our students coming in confident and hitting the ground running with school. We did have a little bit of learning curve with some of the lockers. Combination locks, you may or may not know, are a little outdated for some, but our students are taking that in stride and the new cellphone policy, which I thought could be a little bit of a learning curve, our students have done it with flawless execution. You know, I haven't seen it be impactful in a negative way by any means and quite the opposite is I was going through the cafeterias and watching our students interact and play in the recess area here at the middle school high school. Students were having conversations, they were talking with each other, they were throwing the ball around outside at recess and they weren't staring down at a phone. So, that was really encouraging to see and I think obviously the regular impacts of just less disruption in the classroom, more engagement, focus on what's what they're learning, not necessarily what social media may be clicking at different times. I think our students will really engage in that and I think, kudos to our administrative staff and our teachers, I think they did a good implementation, they had great level meetings, they went over the expectations. And as of now, first week through, I think it's been very successful. We'll continue to support students in making those choices of putting them away and following the procedures, but overall, really great launch to the school year and really proud of our students and staff for welcoming everybody back. So, that's the start of my report for tonight. I'll have some more comments at the end, but it's a great, great first week of school here at Tuckahoe.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. You brought up a couple of things that I forgot to mention, I was so focused on what I had to remember to mention. But I do want to thank the PTA for the support with the welcome of the new administration. It was a great event. Thank you very much for supplying the refreshments for it. And I did tell Ben, we usually have a very small turnout, so don't feel bad, and I was pleasantly surprised when I walked into the room and saw it was full. And I really want to thank all the parents who came out for that event and just to embrace our new administration and give everyone the chance to get to know each other. It was really... It was really a very, very good event, so thank you, PTA. I also want to thank all of our 12-month employees who worked tirelessly over the summer, our custodians, our business office staff, our clerical staff, our administrators. It is... It's one of those things when you... When people find out that you work for a school, they always say, "Oh, you get the summers off." And for 12-month employees, it's like, "No, we don't. It's actually our busiest time." So, you are recognized. Thank you for all of your work, business office, for getting all of the supplies in, custodians for cleaning the building and making it ready for our students, admin staff for all of the important work that you do to get everything ready to welcome our students. So, thank you. And the last thing that I wanted to mention was in regards to the cellphone policy. Thank you to all the students who are abiding by the policy. I know it's not easy, especially for our older ones. But one thing that we have decided as a board also is that when we are at the meetings, we are not going to have our cellphones. We feel that if students are not allowed to have them while they are in school and supposed to be paying attention, that we also will have ours put away. So, for those of you who may be used to being able to text or anything during meetings, we are not... We are no longer... Well, I had... He already had his speech on his cellphone, so I did give him a pass for today, but going forward, we will not be having our cellphones on the table and we will not be checking them. And that's it. Okay. So, comments from the business manager?
Hi. Thank you to the board and to Mr. Roberts and to our whole administrative team. School got off to a really great start. As Mr. Bugatti said, we did a lot of work this summer, from cameras to the PA system to work on the roofs and the tunnels and even at Cottle, some doors. It was a very busy summer. We have an amazing 12-month staff, our custodians and cleaners can just make anything happen. They're fantastic and our clerical staff and business office are truly remarkable. They were very flexible this year with an abatement and us having to go to Cottle. Everyone really took it very well. While it was really busy this summer, there's nothing like the opening of school and being around the kids and having the teachers back. It's truly magnetic, having the buzz going on during the day and being lucky enough to be in the building and walk through the halls and see the work that we're doing is really a gift. I did have the pleasure to view lunch. Students are taking advantage of the free lunch. It's very exciting. So, parents, we have a YouTube video on our YouTube site that explains what is included. We'll send some other information out and kids were really engaged during lunch, so it was... It was very nice to see. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Faith, and thank you for all of your work during the summer. There was a lot going on for you. Okay. Comments from our community partners. So, this is where our PTA, SEPTA, and Athletic Council can choose to speak. Which one would like to go first? Alex?
Hi.
So, Alex, yeah, just since this is your first time, just say your name and then just say what you're representing.
Okay, no problem. My name's Alexandra Campana. I'm here representing the Tuckahoe SEPTA, which we're currently still pre-charter. We're working towards charter, which hopefully might happen in November. So, this past weekend, we hosted our first event with the support of the PTA, which was fantastic. We had a great showing. A large number of parents came and we had staff come as well, some teachers. It was really, really lovely and I think the parents and the students really enjoyed it. And so, we want to just also say thank you to Sue Warnos and the PTA for all their support because they really did a lot to help get us going with that. And that's really it. And our next meeting is going to be September 29th at 7:30 on Zoom, so anyone who would like to join, who hasn't received any of our emails or would, you know, want to get involved, they could probably reach out to like the special ed office and they could contact me, but we'll also be at all the back-to-school nights, so they'll get hopefully our information then. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex, and I just want to encourage the community to please join SEPTA, even if you do not have a child with special needs. It's really important to support this new program and all that they are going to try to do for our students. It's one community together and it's really important to support SEPTA and PTA and Athletic Council.
My name is Beth Silvestri. I live at 11 Gifford Street. I'm here representing the Athletic Council and on behalf of the Athletic Council, we would like to welcome you all to the 25, 26 school year. The Athletic Council will be at back-to-school nights where we will be selling membership and stadium seating. If you purchase a black and orange membership for $100, you will receive a lawn sign. I brought a sample. And we're really proud of our lawn signs and we feel like they definitely promote school spirit and a sense of community and it's really fun to see these around town. So, if you do purchase a black and orange membership, this is what we will deliver to your house. This information for membership will also be displayed on our social media pages, so follow that. In addition, we will be selling homecoming t-shirts again. They're not quite ready yet, so please again, follow our social media for information on that and we are usually really flexible with getting them to people once they reach out. Homecoming will start the week of September 29th. And we also recently started a grants process where coaches can apply for funding to go towards their teams for items that maybe the district cannot fund. So, you know, you've seen the, you know, items that you've approved in the past, such as multiple-use athletic cages, maybe warm-up shirts, maybe team dinner, and coaches will apply for these for a grant and we will review it and it will be brought to the board for approval. And lastly, we've been collaborating with Mr. C. and look forward to another successful school year, supporting all Tuckahoe athletics, so thank you.
Thank you, Beth. You can just put that Tiger sign right next to my Gator sign there. Thank you for the grants also. Those will really go far for teams that don't have a large fundraising base, so thank you for all that you do.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sue Warnos. I'm the president of the PTA and I'm very happy to be here kicking off the new school year. I want to mention to the community, you may have seen some information about a new platform that we're using. We've migrated our directory from School B. The new platform is called Membership Toolkit. You don't necessarily even need to remember that because if you just go to tuckahopta.com, you'll see the new website and everything is right there, a lot easier to navigate. As I said, we've migrated all names over from School B, so your contact information should be in there. If you go and hit the register button, it may recognize your email address and then you just need to take some steps to verify your information. Others will need to create a new account and it is all secure. We... If we do have new accounts, we actually need to approve them as admins and that's the way we'll avoid any kind of rogue people who want to be part of our directory. So, I do want to just mention that that was one of the things that we looked at when we decided to go with this new platform, was the privacy and security. Bronxville uses Membership Toolkit, as does Scarsdale, and I talked to people from those communities on the PTA before we decided to go with it. So, we're really excited about it because it's a lot easier, but please do go and activate your account and once you do, please go ahead and join the PTA by paying dues. Joining the PTA does not necessarily mean you need to do any volunteering. Of course, we love that you, you know, if you want to, we've got plenty of opportunities, but we... It's really more about the support and the dues because that... This is one of our biggest fundraising campaigns of the year and as Allison said, I do encourage everybody to please join SEPTA and PTA. I know I'm asking people to do two sets of dues, but it, you know, these are the funds that are really the baseline for all of the things that we do throughout the year. And I will say that that meet and greet on Saturday, it was, it was just so... It was great and Alex has been fantastic to work with and the whole army of people that she has already mobilized. It's just very cool and I think the community would be really proud to know how every... So many people have embraced this idea of the SEPTA and Alex has... has already mobilized. It's, it's just very cool, and I think the community would be really proud to know how every, so many people have embraced this idea of the SEPTA, and Alex has made such headway in such a short amount of time. It's been great. So I do want to say again, thank you to the Community and School Relations Committees, Committee for providing the, the refreshments at the meet and greet of the administration last week, as well as for the teacher and staff breakfast at the superintendent's conference. I want to thank the welcoming committee for decorating the schools for the first day of school, as well as their planning of the, the meet and greet day. This week, we'll have spirit wear starting at back-to-school nights, and we'll have that throughout the month. Our spirit wear is, is really fun. It is every year, but I liked the email that you might have seen gone, go out earlier today of new gear, new gear. So I'm very sucked in by that. Good marketing email. I'm definitely going to be spending some money there. Let's see, just a couple other things. Our room reps are actually recruiting for room reps down at Coddle, so please, parents down at Coddle, look out for those flyers and those emails, asking for your help being liaisons with teachers. Then for the teachers, our grant applications are due on September 26th, and so we do hope to see some great new ideas coming in for that. And then that's really it. Our first executive board meeting is tomorrow night, so I will be back next month with loads of updates for you. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan. The P T A has been extremely generous to us in recent years, and I mean, you guys are always so great, and we really appreciate it. So I really encourage everyone to join as a member because they really do give back to the district in so many ways with their time, with money, with grants. And it's just, I mean, I might be partial, but we have the best P T A. Thank you. Okay. First recognition of the audience. This is for agenda items only, and just a reminder that we have a three-minute time limit.
Hi. Is it on? No. Okay. Leah Vandaloo, 14 Deerfield Avenue. I'm a middle school, high school parent. I just have a quick question on the agenda, also just for the benefit of the people watching. I, there were a lot of, like, staff getting assigned to the different clubs, moderators, and obviously, the offerings are great. I remember last year in the budget, the high school was supposed to add Model U N. I was just curious if it's just an administrative thing of like, they haven't figured out who's doing it yet.
So there are, I'll ask that, there are some, some of the clubs are still being posted, waiting for some of the newer advisors to sign up, so it'll be, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. So yes, there will be other, just other recommendations coming forward. Before the clubs start in October, there's a few postings that have to go out, and we're waiting for a few advisors to sign up for those clubs. So those, those will be clubs that'll be recommended to the board, hopefully at the next action meeting we can.
Thank you.
Hi. Dr. Lori Sherald with Teen Wallace. I have a high schooler here. Everyone knows me here, so it's fine. I was wondering about what is the process for getting on the strategic planning committee and all of that? What will the process be? Because I always hear, oh, we hand these things out, we're sending things around to have stakeholders. I never see them. I never see any of those invitations. So what is the process for that?
So what my goal is, I'm going to be presenting to the board, my process to them all in full. In the past, I believe emails have gone out communicating, whether it's steering committee. So we will use some of those mass communications, and then there'll be a selection process for applicants. And then for the steering committee, we'll, we'll refine that, those recommendations that the board can look at, potential community members that may have applied, and then we'll select a certain amount based upon, so we have good representation from all of our various stakeholder groups. So a certain number of teachers, administrators, parents in the community, and then we'll make those recommendations move forward. So they'll be coming from my office very soon, but I'm going to review those with the board just to make sure that's in line with what their process has been in the past, previous strategic plans. And then we're going to, we'll launch that and make sure that everyone's communicated. So we have ample opportunities for everyone to volunteer, and then the, the selection process will take place subsequently thereafter.
And who's on the steering committees? And how are they determined? Who's on the steering committees, and how are those members determined?
So I can speak to, again, the past, if you want to jump in from what's happened in the past, Ms. House, President Halloran, but what I believe is, we have a set number that the, the board is, is selecting the past. So four or five administrators, four or five teachers, four or five community members, based upon the previous documents that I've seen those individuals apply for those in terms of a submission, they have interest in, in joining one of our advisory committees. And then the board looks at those applications and makes recommendations or makes selections based upon the number of volunteers they may receive.
So the board's going to be making the decisions about the steering committees and who's on strategic plan? Is that what you're saying?
It's going to be one, one committee.
Correct. It helps with the steering, yes.
And so last year, we did send out an email to all, to the email list, the whole blast, asking for applications. The steering committee was one of them, along with a few other committees. We did have quite a few applicants, so I'm sorry that you didn't see it because it did go out, and we did have quite a few applicants.
I believe you, I just didn't see it. I just want to make sure I'm on some of these committees.
We did select some members of that, and I was going to ask you that you are planning to still use, because that committee didn't really get off the ground too much because we ended up with the superintendent search. And so I do know that those people who were selected are very interested in continuing on it since they were selected last year. If we want to open it up to additional committee, community members, that's certainly understandable and welcomed. But it did go out, and there, there is a committee, and there are several community members on it.
Okay. I just want to make sure that when we have these committees and they're selected, that they really are representative of everyone in the community, not certain groups and certain cliques. I just want to make sure that they're, they're properly formed, and particularly when you're talking about a strategic plan that drives, you know, the blueprint for how we're going to be moving forward. And we've come a long way in the district. I've been here a long time now, and I don't want to see us go backwards. I want to see us go forward. So it's important that we include everybody and just make, making a public that I definitely would like to serve on that committee, particularly for the strategic plan.
Well, moving forward is definitely the goal of all of ours. Nobody wants us to move backwards. Thank you. Okay. Consent agenda. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Uni-Free School District motions to approve consent agenda items two and three. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Scott. Any conversation? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Business of the board. Adopt, adopt policy 2245, ex officio student board member. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Uni-Free School District adopts policy 2245, ex officio student board member as attached to the official minutes of this meeting. On September 5th, 2024, the governor signed Bill, Senate Bill S. 909018A, amending the New York State education law to allow for the designation of students as ex officio members of the school board and clarify, and clarifying with student members and permitted to do, or permitted to do, sorry. The law requires school districts and B O Cs to designate at least one ex officio student member on their school board. The bill repeals the sections of the educational law that currently call for school districts to submit a referendum to voters to determine whether the district should have an ex officio student member. This law will take effect on July 1, 2025. The ex officio student board member will be elected during the G O election being held on September 15, 2025. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Lou, all in favor? Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Uni-Free School District approve the attached budget transfers. The budget transfers are available to view in the public section of the agenda on board docs, if anybody was interested. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Scott, all in favor? Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Uni-Free School District hereby approves an agreement with Edgar Panida for photography services for the 2025 middle school and high school graduation ceremonies and photography services for the district events for the 2025-26 school year at an amount not to exceed $2,350. Do I have a motion? Lou, second. Pete. Any conversation? Any comments? All in favor? Approve a tax searchyarity settlement. Resolve that in the matter of the tax searchyarity, tax searchyarity, it's a tricky word, proceeding, proceeding brought by Chester Heights Gardens Condominium II concerning properties located at 18-96 Oregon Avenue, Town of Eastchester, identified as Section 80, Block 1, lots 7-point F-18 to 58B and 7-point G-60A to 96B. The Board of Education hereby approves the proposed settlement as recommended by the Town of Eastchester. Said settlement will result in an estimated tax refund not to exceed $60,804.67, and the district is authorized to make such payments upon receipt of the signed judgment. And be it further resolved that the district authorizes an increase to account A1964-400, refund of real property taxes in the amount of $20,729.98, and a corresponding decrease to account A864, tax searchyarity reserve, in the amount of $20,729.98 to be applied in accordance with the applicable law for the payment of legal fees, expenses, and tax searchyarity judgments. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Lou, all in favor? Any discussion? Sorry. Okay. All in favor? Okay. Approval, approved disposal of public property. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Uni-Free School District, in accordance with the policy 6900, disposal of public property declares the following textbooks to be obsolete. Quantity 35, title Physics and Principles and Problem, ISBN 97800788072313. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Uni-Free School District authorizes the disposal of the above by offering for sale to local municipalities or local nonprofit organizations, or selling at a public auction or sale. Otherwise, they will be recycled in the most environmentally appropriate manner. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Lou, all in favor? Personnel recommendations. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Uni-Free School District approve personnel recommendations A through F. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Lou, all in favor? Personnel recommendations. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Uni-Free School District approve personnel recommendations A through F. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Lou, any comments? All in favor? Thank you to all the staff who volunteered to run the clubs. It's much appreciated. Second recognition of the audience. This is for any matters that you would like to bring to the board. And again, just a reminder that there is a three-minute time limit. Anybody?
Hello, good. Leah Vandaloo, 14 Deerfield. I'm a middle school and high school parent. I, well, one, wanted to thank the board for all your work and the new administration team. It's definitely really exciting to see school back open, and as much as my children were not excited a week ago, they've been really happy so far. So I had two quick things. One is, I just want to reiterate my interest, and I think other people's interest, in an ability to participate in board meetings via Zoom or some platform like that. I know you have like much bigger priorities, but just wanted to bring that up. I think a lot of, more community members would participate and pub, like publicly address the board if they didn't have to be here physically. Just something to think about. On the second thing that I wanted to bring up, and I think it's kind of, I've just been thinking about it, you know, I'm not an educator, but I am curious, like, as you work on the communication you mentioned and the strategic plan, obviously, as parents, we know technology changes education, but I, for one, as a parent, would love to kind of know the board and like our administrators' view on live instruction versus video instruction. You know, like, when a teacher, like, obviously, there's videos, you could watch the lesson or, but you, do you know what I mean? Like, we, we're, I'm old, right? So my teachers, like, taught the lesson on a board, and I'm, I'm just curious, like, if we have any standards, like, expectations for the staff on a video lesson versus them delivering the lesson? Not expecting an answer right now, but it's just something, as a parent, I'm really curious about because, you know, I, I find myself saying to my kids, like, well, when I went to school, it was like this, but I know it's changed. So.
I'll ask that, just so I, for my standard in, in terms of good education, when you look at the tenets of good teaching, it really comes down to student engagement. So how the, how the educator is delivering the content, whether they're using different video components to really engage them and, and using clips, kind of highlighting that the parts and that students are going to get excited about, that may make a lesson come alive. And then from there, focusing on student discussion and inquiry. You know, those are the best parts of education, I think, and that's what our teachers do a nice job of. So I don't know if I answered your question about holistically, like, watching a full video or a lesson of something, or again, I think from what I've seen it used to the most is a small video clip or small visual image, and then really promoting the, the discussion thereafter within the class. And then, you know, our, our teachers that are doing the best job, really engaging with students are the ones that get them to dive into that and make those comparisons and use the best both worlds of that.
Agreed. Thank you.
Just about the Zoom real quick. So you're saying to have it, sorry, but you're saying to have it, so parents at home could basically watch our meeting and then ask questions through some kind of.
Yeah, participate. Because obviously, we can watch it live, right? I could, you know, you could probably just, it's not a dial-in, but you know, the live link.
Right. I think for me, if it wasn't organized, if it was organized chaos, maybe basically, I don't know how you, it's like, pick who's going to say something, right? I guess that has to be a moderator, someone on there, but it's a great idea, by the way, because I think you would get more community interaction with the board, because then it's tougher for people to come to meetings. I get it, especially if we're late, you know, so we expect this here at 7:30, we show up at 8:00. It's, it's tough, and then you have to wait an hour and a half to ask your question, right? So that's something that we should.
Yeah. I mean, trust me, I, I know there's more important priorities.
No, but community engagement.
But as far as I know, it's allowed, like legally, right? There just has to be, you know, anyways. I've looked into it, but I don't know how many districts do it, and I wouldn't want, I don't, it could be a double-edged sword as far as participation, but I just know, you know, this is a lot of people for a board meeting, you know, sadly.
I know that, like, a lot of the town, sorry, a lot of town and, and village municipalities for, say, planning board hearings and zoning board hearings, it was acceptable during COVID, and now they, they put that to a stop, basically.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure about the school.
So I have watched, sorry, sorry. I mean, I've watched a lot of different school districts' board meetings, and I haven't seen any do that. Also, I feel that it does kind of change the dynamic a little bit. It is, sometimes when people are, are online, they like to say things that they wouldn't necessarily say if we were speaking to each other. And so to, to keep everything professional and I, I just prefer, I, I hate, I feel like people talk over each other in Zooms. I prefer one-to-one conversation. That's just my opinion.
Sure. No, 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 it's all. Yeah. I, I, trust me, I totally get it. And I think you're, as a board, you said one of your goals or, you know, things you've already decided is maybe sending out recaps, you know, more communication. That, that could help as well. I'm just saying that there is like power in public comment, but it's hard to get here for a lot of people. That's all.
I believe Eastchester actually does it.
Do they?
And I think the way they do it, if I remember correctly, is, to your point, rather than, I don't know if you're suggesting sending in a question electronically, but I think the way they've done it, the way I've seen it done is, we have a screen setup, and they're, they're on the screen, so you're seeing who they are, and they're making, they're, they're posing their question through the video. So, so it's, it's, it's not like they're hiding behind a keyboard or anything. They are actually being seen. But it is definitely a logistical challenge to get that set up, to do all that. But I do think, I do think Eastchester does that. At least they were doing it. I don't know if that was a carryover from COVID. Maybe they're not doing it anymore. I'm not sure. I haven't tuned in in a while.
Thank you. Just food for thought.
Just to, you know, I'm just, we're going to move on to board comments, because then I'm going to comment in the board comments. So do you have anything else, Leah?
No.
Okay. All right. So board comments, and I'm going to start, if you guys don't mind. So one of the ways that, when I talk about community engagement and reaching out, this idea of an email, is.
All right, so board comments, and I'm going to start if you guys don't mind. So one of the ways that when I talk about community engagement and reaching out, this idea of an email is my idea, and I'm hoping that I'm going to be able to do this, and it's not just like an idea, but that I can actually bring it forward, is to basically say, you know, here's, and it's probably going to be monthly. I can't imagine that I'm going to do it twice a month, but you know, once a month, say, you know, on September 8th, the board had this meeting. Here are some of the things that were discussed with a link to the YouTube to watch the meeting. But just, you know, a little bit more community engagement of saying, here are some things that happened. And, you know, if you want to see more, watch the YouTube, and you can see more, which then I think, hopefully, will get people to watch, will get people a little bit more engaged, and will encourage people to either send in questions that the superintendent or I can answer, or that they will be encouraged to come to a meeting and speak when they see that it's really not as terrifying as it seems. But, you know, that's definitely part of the communication goal that we would like. I mean, we are always, you can email at any point, and if you were to ask to meet, we would. Of course, you know, if there's a problem, we always recommend chain of command. That is, you know, going to your teacher, to your building administrator, to your superintendent, and then to the board. A lot of people would be surprised that what they think the board can handle, the board really can't handle. So, you know, but it is always best chain of command. But yes, we are always open to having conversation and to speaking about things and leading you into the direction of people who could help you if we can.
I'll just build on what you said. Another thing that we talked about in the field of more communications and more transparency and more engagement with our board meetings, we talked about doing a better job this year also of pre-announcing our workshop topics. Because that's something in the past we got away from doing, where we would announce we have a workshop, but the public announcement wouldn't say what the workshop topic was. So I think we talked about over a retreat, making sure that we do that now so that if the topic is something of interest to a community member, they're maybe more likely to engage or to communicate or to watch. Just saying a workshop is not very helpful, so we're going to do a better job of putting out ahead of time what our workshop topic is going to be.
Yeah, because actually, I mean, my own personal opinion is that workshops are more important to watch and to listen to than regular business meetings. That's where the real meat of what's going on in the district is discussed. So we don't, we don't allow any public comment during workshops, but definitely if you watch them and then sent in a comment for us to consider, we would get back to you, and you are certainly welcome to come to the next board meeting and then follow up with a comment on the workshop.
Hi, I'm Susan Millie. I live in Chester Heights. Thank you all for your service. Exactly what you just said, Allison, is what I stood up to comment on is, I don't know if there's, what the rationale is, but you're right, the workshops are where all the juicy stuff goes on, but the public is shut down. Like, yes, we could watch them, but that's when we want to chime in with questions while the administrators are in the room talking about it, giving their presentations. And if we come to the next general meeting to pose a question, those administrators are not in the room anymore. And I know those meetings tend to go really long, so adding public comment could make it even longer. But that's always been a point of frustration for me, is that that's when I want to ask my question, is while the principals are there, you know, the administrators are there. So I don't know if there's any thought you could give to that.
So that was actually something that I did raise during the retreat, and we discussed this because being where you're standing, it used to be a huge pet peeve of mine. However, I can tell you that very quickly, so for our retreat, we had somebody guide us from NISBA, which is New York State School Board Association, to really do like a good thorough training because we are such a young board on this team, with the exception of Pete. I don't mean his age, I mean his years of service. But, you know, really to give us a really good thorough training on what a board is supposed to do and the things that, and how we should conduct ourselves. And when I brought that up, the NISBA consultant was like, that's not a good idea, and I do not recommend that. Mostly because it could bring in a lot of negative feelings, you know, if you have somebody who is angry and now like the administrator is kind of caught off guard. Also, they're not prepared to answer those questions that you're going to come up with, right? So all it really does is, I'll have to get back to you, I'll have to get back to you, I'll have to get back to you. Where so if they're presenting something and you're watching it, and then you send in your questions, we can forward those questions to them. They can come up with ample information to answer your question and give food for thought on how to answer it, rather than being on the spot and like, you know, having to just turn around and say, I'm going to have to get back to you.
If I can just add to that, too, because I think it's a good point. The other thing to remember, too, about a workshop is that it's really meant to be for the board to work on things with the administration together in public view. So it's really not meant to be, that's why we don't allow public comments, because it's supposed to be us doing our work in public view, kind of like in the zoo, or beyond a cage, without, maybe this is a bad analogy. It's if you make it public comments, then it becomes something other than that, right? It becomes something more than that. So it becomes more like a town hall at that point, you know? So maybe that's something to, you know, if there's a particular topic that's of big interest, you could recommend, I mean, like a town hall or something. But I do think, going back to what we said before, if we're doing, if we do a better job of communicating the workshop topic ahead of time, then you could email in to the board member, to board, to the board, and I recommend all board members, not one particular board member, what your particular question might be or something you'd like us to explore during that workshop. That's perfectly fine, ahead of time to tell, hey, I would love it if somebody brought up or asked this question or explored this topic in this larger topic of a workshop. So that's probably the right way to do that interaction. But again, you need to know what the workshop topic is ahead of time in order to do that, so that's why I have to do a better job of that.
Another part, and this is to get back to Leah's point, and Pete kind of just alluded to it, is doing the town halls. I did mention that part of our board communication efforts, we're going, we're going to try to get back to, you know, a while back, back when I was PTA president, we did a couple where it was two board members, superintendent, and then the superintendent also chose an administrator liaison to be included. And people submitted questions, and it was like just a town hall meeting, just, and it was informal, it was not televised. So it gave people a little more relaxed opportunity to ask questions that they felt were important. And you could also send them in ahead of time. We actually required that the questions were sent in ahead of time so that if you couldn't make it, at least you knew that your question or concern was going to be addressed. So, you know, just different ways that we're trying to be baby steps, but we're getting there.
Sure, just a quick few follow-ups for me. So I wanted to point out, the board on the agenda tonight did accept the resignation of Dr. Quackenbush, so just wanted to highlight that for a second. So unfortunately, due to some unexpected personal situations involving your family, she wasn't able to remain in her position. So with regrets, we accepted, the board accepted her resignation. We've already posted for that. We're looking to, we'll be getting our hiring process in the very near future and bring a great candidate back in as soon as possible. The posting closes, I believe, later this month, the 19th. We'll start interviews with our full committee and then hopefully bring another great Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology to the district, and then get them here as soon as possible. So I wanted to just share that as an important piece of information. Did mention it at our parent meeting the other evening, but I wanted to point it out now that it's become official. The board has accepted it, and her last day will be the 12th here. Looking forward to the student joining us after the GEO elections next, later next week, and then having them come for our upcoming workshops and Board of Education meetings. I think that allowed a great dynamic to our board here and getting a student perspective on different topics. Looking forward to that. I also wanted to highlight the PTA event and the SEP event this past week. I heard great, great feedback from Ms. Doish, she was there, but also kudos to our soccer team. The boys and girls were there assisting and really making it a great community event. So just another way of our student athletes and students being leaders. You see it in and out here at Tuckahoe, which is amazing. I got a taste of my first football game here at Tuckahoe the other day, and as well as many other athletic events, and the school spirit is phenomenal. There's so many people that traveled up to Chester. I thought I was in West Texas to believe that. But it was a great, great feel to see just the community come together and support our students and for our students to cheer each other on in every venue, volleyball, boys and girls soccer. I've got to go to tennis next week. I'm looking forward to that, but just celebrating our students doing a great job. And I'll highlight them next week, but we had three students that were recognized for NISBA accomplishments also. So kudos to them, and we'll make sure they've been recognized on the student announcement, and we will give them a shout out at the next board meeting as well for their accomplishments. So that concludes my report.
Okay, so motion to adjourn the meeting. Pete, second. Joel, all in favor? Okay, good night, everyone. Thanks for coming out.